Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the town of Bena Vista, Colorado. It's February 11, 2025. We'll begin this evening with a work session. And we have as our guests some students and their parents from the Darren Patterson Christian Academy, and they're going to talk to us about safety. So who is taking the lead here? You could tell us what your name is.
I'm Clara and I'm just gonna tell you what we have, who we are and what we've been working on and been doing. Thank you for having us. We are four senior graduate students from Darren Patterson Christian Academy here in Bena Vista. We're here because we have been working on and studying, like, or take it down. We're here because we have been working on and studying, studying concerns we have about pedestrian safety here in our town. This fall, we went downtown and looked around Main Street, also in traffic. We also looked around the soccer fields. The day we went downtown was not busy, but there were still a lot of cars that didn't stop. We observed cars, cars not even not stopping at all. We also saw pedestrians got jaywalking. We would like to present some ideas we have for both areas.
We observed around seventeen cars that fully stopped at crosswalks, eighty-seven cars that did, that did a rolling stop. We had eleven cars that didn't stop at all. We also observed thirteen pedestrians who didn't use the crosswalks. The crosswalks are really faded and are hard to see. This creates a problem for local drivers and those from out of town as well. There are not enough signs telling drivers to beware and walkers right across. Some of our, some of our things that we thought we could do to improve these problems, one of them was to paint the crosswalks in clear, more clear, stronger colors that both local and people from here could, could recognize or even painting them to look 3D like in this picture. We spoke to an artist who said she could paint these in paint that wouldn't be slippery and that would last, and that would last for a long time for fifty dollars per square foot. Another thing that we were going to do was to add speed bumps by every parson's and by the railroad street to slow traffic and get people's attention. Another thing that we could do is add signs in the middle of the street and crosswalks to focus attention to the crosswalks. We were also thinking of adding flashing signs indicating vehicle speeds at the main crossman streets.
Do you have any questions? Any concerns or any questions like that?
Stacey, any questions yet?
Do you have questions?
Um, well, not really, but we do have, we would suggest to put the, the, the 3D sidewalks, like Sullivan said, on streets, replace the crosswalks if that is doable for you guys, like these, one of these. Also, we also wanted to put down maybe like one speed bump around the town. Oh, so we could put town more stop signs? Or maybe even those flashing signs that Brian and Philip came to show us at the top at DPC. So we just have these that we could put and we could replace with those faded sidewalks. Maybe even signs like these, more stop signs, or maybe even those flashing signs. So yeah. Any more questions?
I think trustee Heidi got a question for you.
Not a question, just a comment on the really great data that you all provided. It was super helpful and good job. Thanks so much for coming to share that with us.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
I have a question.
Oh.
Mr. Rice.
Yeah, I was just curious, how many students participate in the, how many students, raise your hand if you participated in the counting? When you guys are counting stops and jaywalkers and cars.
All of the fourth and fifth graders.
Everybody counted?
Everybody in the fourth and fifth grade.
On, on how many days?
Um, one, one day we counted.
All in the same location?
Uh, no. We, we, we kept going down like streets. So we, we started from, we started like,
We started by the library.
And then we kept going down from there.
And it looks like your statistics indicate you, you observed quite a bit of noncompliance with traffic laws.
Well, yes, we did. We did observe a lot.
Did you ever think of seeing if you had a police escort when you would do your counts? Thank, thank you all. That was.
I can amend you on your topic. It's a very important topic and it's been a concern. The crosswalks have definitely been a concern for a long time in our town and I think it's feared enough to present the topic and through it scares me to death when a child does not push the button on the crosswalk. So I think that you guys are more apt to push the button than somebody else. So good job.
Okay, um. Bena Vista's River Park is a popular place among tourists and locals. There's a growing popularity of surfing, hiking, dog walking, use of the field, and the very busy soccer season, real busy work program. A few of us went to the soccer fields on a Saturday morning and made some observations. This particular Saturday was an extremely busy due to the majority of the games being played elsewhere. But most of us are aware, have used the river park on busy days and are aware of the risks involved with this high traffic area and the dangers on small children.
Observations are there is no signage to alert drivers of the speed limit or that the river park is a high traffic area, especially during soccer. Children often run across the parking lot to get a ball to, or to run to the restroom. Small children are hard to see around because the trees block cars when sitting around the corner. Our ideas for possible solution. Number one, a speed bump right where the fence starts on like where the rocks are. Number two, a flashing speed sign. Number three, signs that speak to pedestrians being present. Um, number four is a fence around the soccer field to follow kids to a specific entry and exit point. Five, cut down some trees to open up the blind spot.
Um, thank you again for having us and these are just like reminders.
Are you taking questions?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Are there, are there some questions from the trustees? I'd like to know if, if in looking at your various suggestions, did you do any work around trying to find out how much different options would cost?
Oh, like, like the fence and probably the like speed limit sign would be pretty expensive.
No, I think you're probably right about that.
Colin, how much is a sign?
The ad that came out, two for seven thousand.
Two for seven thousand?
Yep. Fully powered, have visual speed noise.
If you, if you only had enough money to put speed bumps in one place, either the park or the other places in town, where would you prefer to see a speed bump?
The park.
The park also, I vote park.
I think we would give the park.
Why, why do you think that would be a higher priority?
Because there are children that go out into the road a lot and cars go last around the corner. So I want to slow them down.
Also, there will already a railway that, for those people that are on Main Street, but not near the school. It just turned down up there.
So you would prioritize safety at the park more than the, the streets if you had to pick?
Yes. Well, from the speed bump, yes, but don't fancy.
I feel like it would be safety both ways, honestly, because I just feel like we should prioritize both of them. So.
I have a question back on your crosswalk painting. What does it mean to have a 3D paint job done? I don't understand that.
It's like people will see it, problems, oh no, I need to slow down because I might run into this. That will probably be their first thought. Then they'll realize that it's fake, but I mean.
Could you, could you pass, could you pass that around to us? It scared the crap out of you, wouldn't it?
Hey, have you, have you all?
Have a question.
I have a question. Have you used the flags that we've put up in the crosswalks?
Yeah, we made a video. Yeah, we made a video about it.
Do you like the flags?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they do help. Yeah, they definitely help a lot.
Cool.
I do think that some people don't know what they mean.
Yeah.
I didn't know until I started this.
Good question. I missed the beginning of the presentation. I'm so sorry I was late. That's inappropriate. Do you feel comfortable biking to school, like safe?
Yeah. I personally don't like to school because it's a little bit long.
I mean, I have to cross like the huge highway, so no.
Do you think you feel comfortable biking in front of the elementary school?
Yes.
On Main Street?
Yes, sometimes, sometimes. There are just people who walk there and you don't want to hit them, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Was there a question over there, Cindy?
Yeah, and it's just a general question. What are they doing on the highway to the crosswalks that are on the major highway? Right now, they're doing some grinding. They're trying to do something to make it more obvious.
They're, they're working on the, on the, on the traffic lane.
How the 3D paint basically works is it looks like an illusion. I mean, it may look like that, but when you like get close to it, it like sort of flat, flattens out. So it doesn't look like there's like a bunch of big white bricks in front of you. It kind of like flattens out and then they're like, oh, I can, you know, wait for the pedestrians to cross and then I can go again.
Thank you. Any questions from the planner?
I was gonna say, does anyone want to apply? You guys have done a great job. I'm so impressed and I would echo that the data you collected is really helpful. So thank you. I'd welcome any of you in my office anyway.
If you get an intern.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other trustee questions? So, um.
Third round of our applause.
Yeah, yeah, our applause, sure. Good. Thank you all for taking your evening.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
You should probably say what to do.
Hi, Brian.
Well, you don't want to stay for the meeting?
Okay. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to the second part of our work session, which is discussing the water allocation policy. And it says we won't make decisions tonight. We need our ideas tonight. Um, there are some important issues with regard to the water allocation policy. And one of those is I want to publish it and have it ready for public comment and a, and a public, public meeting next month, right? So we, we need to get our heads together tonight on it. So I think this is Joel.
It is. Thank you. Thank you, Jorge. So the water allocation policy was first adopted in 2022. There's a second update, official update that we have on the calendar in March with a February work session to get the ball rolling, right? Because there is a public process. It's published and part of the water allocation policy. So that's, that's where we are. The, the purpose why we started it, and I'll go through these slides here in just a minute, but call the, we did not have the 50 acre feet at the time. We did not have much traction really with the Bray Allen water. It was just kind of getting going, but we did recognize, oh, we have so much water in the water portfolio. What do we do with it, right? And, and there were some reasons why we didn't want necessarily the water tied up in perpetuity with a different, a particular project or without also housing being built because there was a dearth of housing specifically, more affordable, attainable or workforce or whatever you want to call it. So with that, we did establish this water allocation policy because this is the water we have. We're bringing some new water in. We also have some different agreements that we've been exploring with other jurisdictions and things to expand that portfolio. And this will change year to year to year. So with that purpose of the policy, this is straight out of a policy for the board and also for the public. It was established in, I guess, 2023 with the purpose of allocating towns available and usable. This is Resolution 172023. That was the very first one. It was updated also, I think, Resolution 17224 coincidentally. Anyway, the desired outcomes of the policy are, one, to determine whether there's sufficient water, water rights to serve proposed development. And two, to create a reasonable assurance that the remaining water rights may be tapped for purposes that will help strengthen the community, its workforce, families, institution, and businesses. So it's whatever we have is contributing to that which we desire as a community. And we also want a framework for future board members and staff to update the policy. And so there is a process that we follow. So that, there are certain triggers for review of this policy. Sometimes the policy can be reviewed in March annually, I mean, every year, but there are also other triggers in case conditions change. So those are the status of remaining SFEs. Remember, SFE is a single family equivalency or one unit of water, basically three quarter inch tap. And if they're different, remember they're different categories of water and if more than one get below a certain threshold, then we can visit that in July or August or whenever we want. We're not there. That's not what this, that trigger. There's also maybe a change in unaccounted for water. Let's say magically we stop all the leaks and we only have a 4% unaccounted for rate over, over a trend line.
No pressure.
No pressure, Sean. If there's over a trend line, then you can say, okay, we're going to reassess what we, what is an SFE. It's no longer 830 gallons a day. It is now 620 or something. Then we can reassess the numbers. That's not what we're doing this time. Are there different changes in trends of development? It's a trigger, but that's not what we're talking about. Is there a desire from the development community, outcry, we need this or that or whatever? That's not tonight. Or we have new water supplies? Yeah, we do. We have 20 budgeted, 20 more acre feet from, from the upper arc. Okay, recall last year, we approved the policy accepting five acre feet and then we had a plan for 20, the other 20 acre feet. That was not actually built in to the policy. So just, it was a plan. So we have 20 acre feet. So yeah, we can visit, hit that trigger and also it's the prelude to March. So, um, not a lot of proposed changes. There, there are, I note three here. The first two are in bold. That's what we'll talk about in the packet. The third one, we won. One, updating the quantities in each of the categories to include the new 20 acre feet. There's a potential language change to correct a loophole I'll go through. We can, it's just an idea. We can include it now. We can defer until after the comp plan some other time. We can not do it. We can codify it a different way, whatever, but throw it out here. And then there's also semantic changes, set structure, et cetera, et cetera. You saw quite a few in the packet. For example, we're no longer planning how to use the 20 acre feet. We now have a proposal that would be made. Next slide, please. So a reminder of categories that we'll talk about. Remember we have, let's say for 100, if we had 100 SFEs of water, we take that 100 and we allocate them to certain categories. A project comes in, hey, I want to do this particular project. We say, okay, well, what category will we draw that water from? And we draw it from that water and at final plat, we approve it. We're off to the races. So those categories, one is infill. It's a geographic boundary, basically east of the highway in the old town area. Number two are non-infill, single family dwelling. Basically, they're not part of that major subdivision process. It's just one ops replaces. Economic development, create, that creates or maintains year-round jobs for public, nonprofit, government, 501(c)(3), et cetera. Catch all. Five, multifamily rental. And there's some specifics in there. There's no condominiumization, for example. It's a long-term rental situation. Affordable, attainable workforce. There's some, there's some qualified point, AMI points, percentages, et cetera. That's all detailed in there. We've got the emergency fund. This was, we had, before we had the upper arc water, we had its allocation into the emergency fund. Now it's zero. Because that's the, the next 25 acre feet that we get. The idea is it's all going into there as the emergency fund. And then general development, everything else basically. So with those, those are the categories we're going to go through. The addition to the, the water, I'll run, run through kind of what we've used up since last year, what we proposed, and then keep that in your head. We'll get some feedback later. We'll go to the next. So this was the SFE's last, last allocated in March 2024. Okay, 75, 47, 26, 14, 45, 60, 0, 105, with 300, basically 373 SFEs available. As of right now, which is a prelude for when we publish it in March, so March 2025, and maybe there's one building permit. We might take one SFE out of here, but 70, so we've used five, used one non-infill, haven't used any economic development, four nonprofits, no multifamily. Use quite a few for attainable. This is for the crossing. And quite a few general development. A lot of it was for the crossing and then some of it was like for the South Main face tubes and such. Yeah.
Quick question, Joe. On the, the, the top line, SFEs allocated and remaining, we're looking at the same thing. In March of 24, we had 75 remaining and now we have 70 remaining.
Yeah. So last March, we started in 2024 with 75.
Remain, remaining as of March 2024, and now we have less remaining as of March 2025.
Five waters have been taken and gone to different projects, initial projects. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Next, so the proposed allocation, and this is based entirely on, it took the plan that, that we saw last year. I just took those numbers for the upper arc water, you know, 10 acre feet, 15 acre feet, et cetera. It just popped into there. So the proposal is to have back up to 75 for infill, add 15 for the non-infill, you know, 61, 46, economic development, 65 multifamily, attainable 38, and then general development's up to 90. So you can see the additions in the next slide. So proposed increase for each of these. Five SFEs in infill, 15 non-infill, 20 economic development, 20 multifamily, 20 attainable, and then 60 into the general category. You did the next slide. So, so this slide in bold, you'll see the proposing and the proposed allocation.
So you're, we're taking, we are adding back SFEs because of the additional water we have in our portfolio now.
Correct. Yeah, we have, so every five acre feet is about 35 SFEs. So we're adding 140 SFEs into the portfolio. And so we're distributing those out.
Gotcha.
In the proposal.
And the emergency being at zero, is that because of the future water that we're purchasing is going to go towards that?
Yeah, we talked about the, because we still have lots of project water. We have about a thousand acre feet stored still. And so the original idea, because we're, we're obligated every year, we have to buy five acre feet, right? And so we had five years, we said, well, the first 25, we'll sell plenty of water, project water, should we need it. So all of that, we saw the, the need for housing and development and things at the rate of growth at that time, right? And so for the first 25, we figured, well, let's dedicate that to development and the next, and, and use project water as we needed. If the drought continued with, and Colorado River water was still scarce, maybe that next five years, we wouldn't have that available, which is why that other 25 acre feet, we needed to count on that.
Yeah, so basically figuring that out the next.
Yeah.
Big water drought.
Yeah. So that was the idea. So, so the total, you can see, we started at 372.9 SFEs a year ago. We had a major subdivision, the crossing. We added some water, but we're not going to be up to 386. Until Bray Allen. So the next one is this loophole sort of a thing, which maybe loophole isn't the right, the right word, but just sort of recognizing one of the inherent fallacies, if you will, that we haven't ironed out yet. Basically, if, as currently written, the water allocation policy does not require anyone to take from multiple buckets. So I can come in, let's say there are 40 SFEs left in general category. I can come in with a development project and I need 39. I can take them all. And then the next person, and I've done nothing as far as attainable housing, economic development, et cetera, nothing directly. There are other ancillary effects, of course, right? The next developer can come in and there's nothing in the general bucket. And so there's, we hit a trigger point. Hey, I'm a developer. We have other needs. Okay. The board depletes from other categories and refills the copper of general, pulls some out of economic development, pulls some out of affordable housing, et cetera. Yeah, we were talking about that last year, right?
Yeah.
And then the next developer takes it again. And essentially, there's no need for a water allocation policy because we're just continually robbing Peter to pay Paul, right?
And we're not, and we're not getting what we want.
And we're not getting what we want. So it might halt some projects, et cetera. So, and it doesn't encourage water as this limited resource to go where, where we need to go. So next slide. So this is just an idea. It, it, you know, the forthcoming recommendation and a comp plan, they're working with some, some other communities. We've got a water guy, a housing guy, and there's some, a lot of brain power going into an idea of following sort of a point system where we'll learn more about it. But basically, you know, we, we talked about this with the augmentation certificates. If you want augmentation certificates, you get so many points if you do check so many boxes and you have to have a minimum of such and such points to get water in town, right? So taking, so that's an idea that's kind of forthcoming, but using that sort of basic principle, tying it into here, just because of the timing of it being marked, et cetera. There's a potential language added within the definition of the general development. And it says that for major subdivisions, a maximum of 80% water allocation may come from general development, meaning the other 20 have to come from other, other buckets, however they're put together. For large multifamily, a maximum of 85% can come from general development category, right? So it, it kind of. Well, forces some level of creativity for how you're going to get the other buckets, but you can do live work in it. You can do a deed restriction. You can do some other creative things that we might need. So that's, that's one idea. The numbers, the percentages come from, you know, Salida has a one in six requirement for affordability. Every six buildings, you know, you build six units, one of them has to be affordable. There's also, if you look at the JV Housing Authority, the, do the math with the needs assessment. We need 330 within Buna Vista of the 1100 that J.B. County needs. 330 needs a couple of BB. We've got 150 coming out, or yeah, 150 coming online. Sorry, 160, something like that coming online. Anyway, we're going to be down a deficit of 220 still, between 20 and 250 still. You take all the projects that are, have been discussed within Buna Vista in the last 10 years or something, that's 1,200. So, you know, 20% is generally 240 affordable units. This would not bring affordable units. It can bring a number of different things, but it would at least encourage us. We also don't have water for 1,200 more units too, right? So this is just an idea again for people to chew on. I do have some meetings coming up with probably six, eight, nine, 10 different members of the building and development community that could take as well, if this is something we want to pursue.
Do you feel like it's specific enough where people would try to find ways around it? You know, because they could just be like, well, it's infill. And then the other 20% is infill.
Well, it depends on, I guess, on the project. I, I mean, some of it is like, yeah, you can pick it up from somewhere else. The infill is geographic in nature.
Right.
So you couldn't, you could use that, but in real specific cases, right? Yeah, most cases you couldn't. So, yeah, I mean, it, I'm sure there's all sorts of different creative things that people can come up with. We, we, the planning department, we routinely have people coming in with all kinds of ways to skin the cat, you know?
It would be Brian or planning zoning or us that would decide what bucket it really came out of. They couldn't just say this is.
It would be for site plans and maybe. Major subdivisions, the kind of the board of trustees, planning and zoning would go, you know, major site plans would go to planning zoning. And with staff recommendation, but ultimately that decision happens like through the final plat. And public affirmative, it's a board decision for that. Planning, zoning, the site plan.
Could we say specifically that we wanted it, the 20% to affordable housing?
We can say anything, anything we want, really. So, but this is also a way to soften the edges.
Well, because. And then like in a year, we like, we just make it just affordable.
Something different. And we also have a comp plan coming up, you know? Want to see what, what comes out within the comp plan. So.
I think it puts us back in the driver's seat in that we get to say what it is we want and then we get to make a step towards achieving that rather than just letting somebody take off. I mean, it's back to the same question we had before, which was people could come in and take all of our water.
Yeah. And in that scenario, you know, they could just take all the general development and be like, sorry, you can only build affordable housing, which isn't really, you know, it's easy or it's, it's not as easy to get people to want to do that.
So I think our intent here is to try to make it a little more difficult, just to, like you said, you just keep robbing Peter to pay Paul. We just keep backfilling the general, lo and behold, it's gone and we don't have anything else. If we put something like that in there, is there any way we could tie that and say that, hey, those percentages can't be adjusted in any of the same year that we do a reshuffle? Because what you could do is just say, oh yeah, well, you know, 80%? I think I want to make a motion that we change that to 97.2% this year, and then we just reshuffle. You know, so it still relies on the will of future us to, to carry that vision forward. So I just wonder, is there any way you could say, okay, because that'll be looked at in future years. So those ratios, correct?
Well, some of that is the difference between this and codification, right? And so if, if this is built into the code, it's a different process.
Okay. I thought, okay, I missed that.
Right?
Okay.
Now this also, there are those trigger points. And technically, like during this meeting, we could come in and say, we want two SFEs in each of the other categories and everything else in general. And it's like, okay, if that's what the board wants, then we do that, you know? Like there's nothing to prevent that sort of.
At the end of the day, this just gives future us a tool that we didn't have. And just, it relies on future boards to carry that priority forward.
We did go through this with planning and zoning commission. They didn't have a packet ahead of time to really absorb it, but they didn't have any, any changes to it. They were supportive of it. And the next. And yeah, so with any kind of direction on how we would change this, we would either publish as is, I'd like to add one sentence already, but publish as, as is, or we have to publish it in full, which will be online, and then we'll put in the paper for three weeks, at least three weeks running. We're going to start in March, March 25th. We have a public hearing scheduled for review of this. And so that's kind of the process.
So one more thing to consider on the emergency category. I know we had this discussion last, last go around, but someday, one way to look at that is like, yeah, we, we, we plan to have no emergencies. We just, we just, we just decided we're not going to have an emergency, you know? So we're allocating zero to it. It'd be nice if we had some ongoing precedent, at least having some placeholder there. It doesn't have to be, you know, like we're planning to lose every ride on Cottonwood Creek, but at least something there that's a non-zero value that. I, I, it's still hard to explain why we have no zero budgeted for emergency. We, we know we're going to have 25 acre feet later and we're postponing any emergencies until later.
Would you, would you be okay with like a narrative in there instead of zero? As a plan?
It's right now, we have project water.
Yeah, you could just break project water.
But we needed it. That's where it would come from. So it's not like we don't have emergency. We're just not calling it emergency water because we're planning on spending the next 25 acre feet to fill that. Am I understanding you right?
Yeah, correct. And I think there's an explanation, I think, in there.
Maybe not though.
I think the big thing is we've got about 1,000 acre feet, is that right, Sean? And storage of project water. And so that emergency, we're not necessarily delaying it, but we see that as, you know, coverage for the next five to 10 years.
Okay, let's.
And so that satisfies it as we accumulate the 25.
So when we decide that that's no longer available or reliable, we will start, we will start backfilling with other water for emergency. But it'd be nice to have something in there that would communicate that.
We'll communicate that. We can do that. And I think it's appropriate, especially because once we have water in our portfolio, like that other 25 acre feet or 5 acre feet, and we need to allocate it. If it's not allocated and we run out of water elsewhere, that water is available by law if it's not allocated. So we have to allocate it.
Okay.
To the emergency.
Again, some tieback to saying, in, in these early years, we rely on water that we find may not be reliable in future years, but we got it covered at the moment.
So it's important, so once we get that water available, to have it already allocated before that, because people could, you know, so they could find a way around that. Be like, oh, well, it's here. So I could just, just take it.
It's hard to allocate what water when we don't have it yet. Once we purchase it, I mean, if we have it as a placeholder, this is what this, this water is going here. I mean, any future board is able to just change whatever they, you know, whatever it wants. Hopefully, you know, the decisions now and the communication has communicated will transcend time and they'll do the right thing with it.
Do you like the idea of, of the percentage? I think it's good as it is unless people have other opinions.
It seems like a good number to me and it's equivalent to what Salida is doing.
Yeah, theirs is 18%, but.
Close enough.
Wasn't up for government work.
I didn't say.
And the categories, as far as the allocations, you guys, okay, just continue on with that recommendation from last year or?
You can go back to. Do you, do you foresee any, I mean, I guess this is the same thing that Devin brought up last year, is do we always try to allocate to be ahead of demand and we're going to ourselves right into doing exactly what we don't need? But do you have any sense of any pending uses that are going to get over the finish line shortly? That will change, that would be a big debit in any of these numbers?
I think general development would, would come out.
When it's gone, it's gone.
You can go to 40 here, you know? We've got, we've had a couple big, I guess, development projects in the works, but.
Yeah, with that percentage too, like if we were to run out of like affordable housing or something, then what would we do with that? 20%? I guess we could always adjust it.
I don't think, I can't foresee really anyone getting, I could see maybe South Main becoming entitled, going to final plat before next March. But what, from what they had discussed before, even if full up till that phase three would be less than 90 general development. And then there's another project that might be infill. I think it would qualify as infill. So I think, I think by the time next March rolls around, we can then reassess some categories. It's hard to.
I just, I remember Devin's comments on last year, like are we just going to keep on shuffling every time to?
Yeah.
We're not leaving very much in affordable housing.
I guess my comments last year were kind of centered around people just pulling from general development, general development only, where this policy helps.
Helps.
Helps out.
Well, I'm also curious why we allocated 20 more to multifamily rental housing when we didn't have any usage from the previous year. Are we expecting a large amount of usage coming down the pipeline?
So multifamily and economic development didn't have any use and they allocated 20. And again, all we did was transfer those, that, that plan over.
And we're just trying to paint a picture of what we want. We're not trying to be, the flip side is we're just trying to anticipate what's coming. It's like, no, we would like.
This is what we want.
Yeah, well, this is, this is what we would like to use our water for.
Well, it seems like it might be better to move that 20 out of multifamily rental housing and put it in affordable workforce. Anybody have any feelings about that?
Yeah. I like that. I think considering 45 isn't going down at all unless 45 is still a lot. And yeah, Prop 123, that maybe that, you know, there'll be some funds for affordable housing that might not be there for multifamily.
So for doing questions, I have one. It was so a developer couldn't exhaust the supply and other developers.
Do we legally have the right, if we have the water there in that bucket, to withhold the amount of water from a developer because other developers might come along as a kind of a first come, first served?
Yeah, it's, we can't say, you can only have, well, if it's written in the policy, how the allocation works, Jeff said this is legal. Um, but you know how it's kind of expressed right now.
Any developer, I mean, a percentage, any developer could not come in and take, say fifty percent of the water that's left in that bucket. They would, is there, how do they decide how mu- how do we decide how much they can take?
Yeah, and there is a flow, flow chart in that the policy, whereas you look at, is it in the infill? If it's in the infill, we pull from that first, and then it's, I think, if you're not infill, is it from economic development? And so it goes down the list, and the last one you get to is general development. But if you go down the list and know water is exhausted, the developers there, there's enough water in that general development category without any kind of restriction on that percentage. They can take everything they need if there's water there, and we cannot provide it.
Walk us through one more time, when when that water is theirs? Like at what point of the, what point of the process? The intent was to encourage them, if you're going to build, get on with it.
Yeah, so it's that final, final plat, we'd say, you have, this is, this is your plat, and this is the different buckets you get water from. And they pay at when we're kind of the public improvement agreement. For example, since I vista four, it's already been platted. It's gone through final plat. And so this would not apply to that. They pay for their water. They haven't paid for their water. They pay for it when we do the infrastructure fa- you know, phase five, infrastructure final, public improvement for that phase. And so that's when they'd actually get the water obligated to them. The decision.
Which buckets it's drawn?
Is kind of concurrent with that, with the final plat process. So the final plat is happening, and the public improvement agreement is happening kind of at the same time, and then there's a day, you know, a couple of different steps. When we did the crossing, we all were down signing the final plat. And Paul gave us a check for the water.
Using it as an example, if there are roadblocks and dead ends, and you just, just never gets built. How does, how does that water come back into the?
Yeah, so that's when you have the way, the way it's written in, in the code is there's a ten year, you, from final plat, you have ten years where you, that we have obligated that water and we're holding it for you. After year five, any SFE that you have not used, you pay a maintenance fee. So per SFE, so we're trying, we're, we're encouraging actually getting housing. Year six, it's a little more. Year seven, it's a little more. It's expressive fee schedule. Year ten, uh, we haven't built, you haven't got a building. If you get a building permit, you know, it kicks in at a different time. After year ten, you don't have to pay for more water. But we're not holding it for you. If someone else comes and needs that water, they get to use that water. And then you just have to wait till we get more, more water. So we've got, uh, working on the emergency kind of language and building some of that in there. So it's expressed, moving twenty uh, SFEs from long-term multifamily to affordable, tangible workforce category. I do want to add in here just this explicit statement about the dedication happens at the final plat because it's not explicit in there. So you'll see that coming.
Okay.
Any other?
Is all this, are the SFE numbers based on having our water treatment plant up and running? The new one, or, or is this older data?
This is based on.
Or current data?
Uh, water rights.
Okay.
Yeah. And we're working with the well, the capacity of the well, a three, a four, to be able to, to use, um, I mean, once we bring in the fifty acre feet, that'll be pulling from the well. And so we'll be using the capacities of those wells and to do some analysis of well capacities, what additional like gray alum water, you know, do we need a fifth well, et cetera? But the original twenty. Twenty five hundred and eleven SFEs is only based on the three point zero CFS we have in college.
Kind of ties back to the most recent water disaster plan that we did with Redwater. It's a twenty one, twenty. These numbers are all water rights based, the actual treatment and delivery of that is a different issue that needs to have different ways to deliver the same amount of water, some redundancy. So this is not an infrastructure limitation, this is a water rights limit.
Any else? Thank you all.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Heard any more questions right now? We could take a break. Five minute break. Are, are we recording? Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Board of Trustees for the town of Inova Vista, Colorado. It's February eleventh, two thousand twenty five, and the time is seven oh four P M. Um, Paula, what'd you call the role, please?
Mayor Fay.
Here.
Trustee Hike, here. Trustee Rice.
Here.
Trustee Rosenauer, here.
Here.
Trustee Sturm.
Here.
And Trustee Swisher.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Trustees, you have before you a proposed agenda for this evening's meeting. I assume you've had a chance to look at it over. I have one change that I'd like to make, which is that after our public comment section, our newest trustee, Chris Sturm, would like to make a, a brief comment. So if that's acceptable, it would be one small change in the agenda. Are there any other changes?
I'm overly adopting it as a main.
So we have Bryce and Mike are all in favor.
Aye.
They were opposed. And if it passes, the agenda is adopted as amended. Then we have the consent agenda, which includes minutes from various meetings of our advisory boards and commissions and other committees. It also has the police chief report, the planning director report, the public worker, works director report, and the town clerk report. Does anybody have any items that they would like to pull out of the consent agenda? For, and do you have those be business items?
I have a question in the public works, but it doesn't necessarily have to be pulled out as an item.
Okay, do you want to just ask your question now?
Yeah. Ivy League unaccounted forty five percent is, is, am I reading that? Wrong?
No.
Because it was. Did they have something significant happen after?
No, I think it's just sometimes the timing between the days that we read reports.
Okay.
Because we try to get the month report as close to the
That's true.
The master meter numbers. And then sometimes the, the way the water is registered in the, in the meters, but I, you know, that has something to do with it. Um, but yeah, we, I met with Ivy League representative on Friday, and there was, you know, there was no, nothing came to us in college, too. That was identified. I think sometimes it just gets up in the five range. Wait, we've been kind of seeing this, you know, five, six years.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for asking that. Okay, are there any other changes in the consent agenda or questions about it? Okay, I would take a motion to accept that consent agenda as written.
Move.
Second.
Oh, it's a second? Okay, great. So we have Sturm and Swisher all in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is adopted. Now we have the part of our meeting in which we get public comment. People are asked to sign the clipboard when they come in and indicate their name and address and what the topic is that they'd like to address. We have a three minute limit on, on comments by each person. So the one person who has signed in here is Kevin Pilgrim. Kevin, I'd like for you to approach the podium and give your name and address for the record.
Will do. Uh, my name is Kevin Pilgrim. I live at one thirty two Windwalker Road. I speak only for myself and no one speaks for me. Those words are said with intention. I ask again, the board trustees, seek first to understand and then be understood. It's difficult with a short amount of time to handle town business. I do not fear conflict. Believe we spend too much time talking about people in society today and not enough time talking with people. We spend too much time venting our frustrations on others becomes toxic. I fear unhealthy conflict. We have a history of unhealthy conflict over water and water rights in Colorado. I've seen it firsthand and has interfered with my ability to work as a flood hazard and restoration engineer in the state and in this county. When I worked on flood recovery project in Lefty Creek, I heard a lawyer living in the neighborhood, we were restoring, wanting to sue to stop the project. I convinced my coworkers and the watershed coordinator to hold a meeting with the entire neighborhood. We presented our design and convinced the neighborhood to work together for the sake of everyone. No one stakeholder got exactly what they wanted. And I said no many times, which did not make any profit. It is not my job to be popular as an engineer. My primary obligation as a licensed engineer is to protect the safety, health, property, and welfare of the public. If my professional judgment is overruled under circumstances where safety, health, property, and welfare, the public is endangered, right, I'm supposed to notify my employer or client or other such authorities, maybe appropriate. I've lived up to this obligation time and time again. I've spoken up when I've had concerns that affected the people of the state of Colorado and this valley, and I'm here to do so again. The smart water policy is amazing. Progressive program protects the town from water rights conflicts. That progressive forward thinking helps solve water rate issues for residents. It's one of the reasons I live in town. I ask the town to apply the same forward thinking, the flood risk and post fire flood risk. I ask that we begin the conversations now. And in the near future, as a town and community, as to what we want and how we respond to flood risk. It's a difficult topic to discuss. It will be more difficult to discuss after a flood. It will be impossible to discuss during a flood. I've tried to share the lessons learned with consultants after the fire in Salida, the stream health assessment, the fluvial hazards, zone mapping work over the county under a grant from C W C B. Consultants do not seem interested in having honest conversations about valid scientific concerns. I have expertise, I have knowledge, I can explain the complexities of flood dynamics in a simple and easy way.
I'm going to wrap up.
Last sentence, I've done before, we'll do it again, offering this freely to my community, ask the board of trustees, I can best serve the community.
Mr. Pilgrim? Trustee Sturm, would you like to make any comments?
Uh, yes, thanks, Mayor Fay. I just wanted to thank you all for welcoming me. I'm looking really forward to working with all of you. Uh, as you know, I work for the State Colorado Water Conservation Board, and just wanted everybody to know that if the Board of Trustees is considering uh, any type of formal action to go for a grant from my agency or something of that nature, uh, that I would be just recusing myself from that. I review a subset of grants for my agency. I'm one of many on a committee that does that, so you would still be well served with the rest of the folks to do that. Um, to date, I've never reviewed a grant application from town in my capacity with my agency, though. So I just wanted to make that statement that if I need to recuse myself from being related to my agency work, that it certainly will be done.
Great. Thank you for joining our board. Um, we appreciate your, your coming service. Oh, thank you. Okay, um, tonight we have a a presentation by the new Economic Development Corporation Director, who is Deborah Cameron.
Good evening, Mayor Fay and trustees. I'm Deborah Cameron. I'm the new executive director for the Chaffey County Economic Development Corporation. Um, I won't take much of your time this evening. This is really more of an introduction since I'm six weeks in on the job. So I wanted you to be able to put a name with a face. And I welcome the opportunity to come back every few months and give you a more formal presentation about the activities that the Economic Development Corporation is undertaking. I will share with you tonight a little bit, as, as a little bit of a reminder about what the Economic Development Corporation is, what we do, um, a little bit about our transition. I wanted to give you an update on our aesthetics entrepreneurship program and give you a flavor of what some of our insight series might look like in, in twenty twenty five. I did share with Mayor Fay, as I saw her before the meeting started, that this community center brings back many fond memories as, as I've taken many showers. Um, and your community center here, as my husband and I have been camping in this area for many years. Um, we are new to Chaffey County. Um, we moved down from Denver for this opportunity that I began in, in early January. So just as a little bit of a reminder, the Economic Development Corporation really has the main function of promoting the retention, the expansion, and the creation of jobs here in Chaffey County. We primarily do that through a, a process called engagement. That's engagement around policy issues that keep Chaffey County competitive from an economic development standpoint. Uh, we do that through engaging with entrepreneurs who are starting businesses, scaling businesses, and growing businesses here in Chaffey County. And then we do that through engaging with existing employers here in Chaffey County to retain their operations and, and help them grow here in the community. The Economic Development Corporation is funded by private businesses as well as contributions from public sector partners, including Chaffey County. So I just want to thank you for your continued contribution and support uh, of the work that we do here in Chaffey County. I think most of you have probably worked with Jake Rashavi in the past. Um, so I'm the new Jake, trying to fill his three large shoes. And I'm just delighted to be here. So in terms of the transition, um, you know, we are retaining Jake on a short term assignment. So in terms of the transition, you know, we are retaining Jake on a short term assignment to follow the 2025 ascent cohort that I'll share more about in a couple of minutes. That really has been his passion project. This is now in year four of the ascent program. So he is going to help that cohort get off the ground. That started last week. The other thing that I'm busy doing in my first sixty, thirty to sixty to ninety days is meeting with as many community stakeholders as I can to learn about the economy here in Chaffey County so I can begin to connect dots and developing a develop a strategy for the county going forward. To date, this is my sixth week and I've met over forty individuals and organizations here in Chaffey County so far. And it's it's been wonderful getting to to know them. You know, when you visit the community as a tourist, you see the community at this level. When you're here and you're working to represent and serve the community, you see the community at a differently entirely different level. So it's really been nice to to get to to learn as much about Chaffey County as I can. So a little bit about the ascent program. We have, as I mentioned, this is the fourth year for the ascent entrepreneurship program. We will have ten companies participating in the program this year. Those ten companies will, and there are a couple from Buena Vista, they will be unveiled at a public ceremony on March the 12th that will take place at the steam plant in Salida. Former Governor Ritter will be our keynote speaker for that event. But at that at that event and with some publicity and media relations we'll do afterwards, we'll fully release the the ten cohort companies of who they are. They actually began participating and we do eight sessions with them over a three month period. Those eight sessions began last week and will continue through the end of April. These sessions are training sessions for entrepreneurs and they range from everything about financial forecasting, how to do marketing for their businesses, how to build customer relations, what kind of tech platforms to use, how to go about building an effective team. We cover intellectual property. We really just cover the gamut and bring in specific speakers and subject matter experts in each of those areas for those eight sessions as we move that cohort forward. There will be three events, some very heavily focused on getting the public engaged. And so that March 12th event, we call that the ascent launch program. That's the event that Governor Ritter will speak at, former Governor Ritter on March the 12th. We'll have our powder pitch event on March 6th and 7th. This happens up at Modern Mountain where we bring advisors in to work with these entrepreneurs and provide one on one coaching for them during that event. And then it winds up with a demo day where all the participants in the cohorts get to present and pitch their product or service. I do want to share with you some very impressive metrics from the first three years of the program so far. Up until this year, we've had twenty seven companies participate in the ascent program. Of course, we'll add ten to that this year. Of those twenty seven companies, they have created over seventy net new jobs created here in Chaffey County with a payroll of over three million dollars in annual wages. And those companies have been able to raise over two point four million dollars in in capital investments. So some very impressive outcomes for the program. And we're very happy that we're able to track so closely the outcomes that they're achieving. On the policy side, that is, you know, a main function of what the Economic Development Corporation does. We monitor policy, we especially policies that we believe will be essential to keep Chaffey County economically competitive. So one of the things that 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 policy work includes is what we something we call our insight series. So this is typically three to four events a year where we bring in speakers and include speakers from the local area around policy issues that are relevant here in Chaffey County. So this year, we're still ideating and brainstorming about what those sessions will look like. But some of the things that are getting traction that we think we will be moving forward with, one is an economic update that will occur in April. This has been done a couple of times in the in the past and has been very well received where we bring someone in from the University of Colorado School of Business, the School of Business. And they do an economic and an economic update going over data elements that are relevant here in Chaffey County. So we actually have that scheduled for April. The other two topics that I think we will be moving forward with in 2025 is an early childhood education and childcare topic. We will, in all likelihood, do that here in Buena Vista related to the opening of the Grove and and do some education and policy work around that. And then late in the year, we will do a land use update. I think everyone knows Chaffey County passed the new land use code. Late in 2024, they'll be looking at incremental periods due this year in which they receive input from the community about the land use code. So we'll be structuring one of our insight series around that land use update. The other thing I'll be doing is is continuing to connect with stakeholders in the community. So if any of you have suggestions on people that I need to talk with and connect with about Buena Vista specific topics, you know, please reach out to me and let me know. You want to give a shout out to Brian. It's been great to work with him so far. We've also met with the airport team. I met with the school district here in Buena Vista as well. So anything that you think will aid in in my understanding and comprehension of the economy specifically here to Buena Vista, I'd love to know about it so I can and learn I can learn and continue engaging in the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions? People have questions for Deborah? The EDC didn't like our wire allocation plan that we just went through, but I think they've come around.
Well, you know, we're not always going to agree on every element of of every subject. But at the end of the day, I think we're all share the interest of advancing the economy here in Chaffey County and and continuing to have productive relationships.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item. Marika, are you in charge of this or is Joe or this is the cottonwood easement? Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, I'm sorry. Now, so we're at the water conservation plan update. Now, let's talk to them about this.
Thank you, Mayor Fay, trustees, town staff for having me today. So just going to go over a little bit of the baseline of the work that we've been doing. And this isn't meant to be an exhaustive deep dive into updates on the plan. I can share a little bit about where we're at. At the moment, as we're working through the tasks that we originally signed up for as part of the scope of the project. And so we've just in just before Christmas, we published a our fourth technical memorandum, which will have a reviewed revised copy for the next time I show up here on the 25th. But it's basically talking about some alternatives that the Water Advisory Board, along with our help, have selected to recommend the town pursue to meet its water conservation goals. But this discussion here is meant to just talk about baseline water usage with town. And I know that the agenda says that we've got thirty to forty five minutes to discuss this. I think that y'all will probably get the gist of it before thirty minutes is out. But we've got time for questions and discussion if anybody wants it. But I it I think it's relatively straightforward to understand. And a lot of our recommendations are based on this baseline data. So we go to the next slide, just talk about some key water usage concepts. And just for everybody, the Water Advisory Board is here and they've been doing an incredible job reviewing, adding color to this. So is trustee Rice, his liaison to the Water Advisory Board. And we used to have Water Advisory Board member who's now trustee. Hopefully, he'll still continue participating. But anyway, we've had a pretty high powered group of individuals working on this, working on reviewing the data, working on these the alternatives that we're going to discuss the next one. But before anybody can kind of get their heads around the alternatives, just want to talk about these concepts. And so the data presented in this relatively short presentation is from 2023, but the trends presented for that year are not unique. They're similar for all years. Many fluctuations that you see year to year are driven largely by precipitation events. So in very wet years, people use less water watering lawns, outdoor usage, and then the amount of water loss or leaks that we have within the system that we've not accounted for. And that fluctuates year to year. Sean and his team at Public Works have been doing an incredible job of staying after it. It does make a big difference in water usage year to year. And so this might, this probably isn't a surprise, but the highest usage months are historically during the summer months. So during winter, people aren't watering. And it's mainly due to outdoor watering activities. I'm defining the summer months as the irrigating season. And so this runs from April to October when we have our more or less our watering rights. Just tied it to that for convenience. But it does impact the tied it, well, let me back up. I've tied it to calling it summer months as a convenience, but it's tied to our water rights that we have available to use during the summer. And so that's important to look at this from April to October, kind of define that as summer months, even though we might have winter weather in either April or October. But the bottom line is that one of those to use is three times more water during its highest usage month, July, August, than it does during any given month during the non irrigating season. And the data show that that is largely due to outdoor watering. And in addition, water loss accounts for twenty one point five percent. The total from 2023, but over the last ten years, some years more, some years less, has been about twenty one percent overall. And there's some infrastructure reasons for that. Some of the pipe that we have is a little bit more prone to leaking and and breaking. And that's not really, you know, something that we have a lot of control over. But we do what we do have control over is our ability to look for those leaks. And so Sean's been and his team, Joe, Petrie, and the Water Department have been doing an incredible job of actually finding those leaks and keeping them under control. And I think we're at one of our historically low water loss times current from the leaks that they repaired recently. So if we go to the next slide, this shows the general water usage trends in town from 2023 compared to what we're calling our firm treatment capacity now. I think everybody is aware that we're under construction for a water treatment plant expansion. So the orange line is what we can currently produce using water rights. This doesn't include wells two, three, and four and any augmentation. And then it also compares it against our current water rights. This considers the drought planning scenario, the right water published in which we take the less senior cottonwood irrigating right off the table. And we have three CFS or one point five nine four million gallons per day. And then the next line is what the water treatment plant that's currently under construction will serve once we're at capacity. And so you can see that right now we are brushing up against what we can currently produce that accesses our firm water rights. And so for a long time, starting in 2018, and even prior than that, we were having discussions about, you know, yes, we need to pursue water rights, but we also have an infrastructure problem. We need to be able to get that water into the pipes, be able to serve the community. And so this year shows that we, you know, didn't quite hit that firm treatment capacity. But in prior years, we have been over that capacity. And I can show in a later slide how precipitation, annual precipitation events do affect. It's not completely perfectly correlated, but they do have a significant impact on water usage. And so once we finish that water treatment plant project, we'll be able to serve more of this water to the community. But I think as a note, the necessity of that water treatment plant project is due to that peaking factor that's put us over in in many years in the last ten our our actual firm treatment capacity. So you see the impact on water demand and the actual capital expenditures that the town has to make. And then some other items, questions we want to answer if we go to the next slide. I know that we, you know, we have a lot of tourism. Town is becoming an increasingly popular place. And I'm sure that does have some impact on the summertime demand, although it's a little bit difficult to tease out. What we do see is that residential usage for single family homes has one of the largest impact in in consumption. So while there might be some impact to tourism because this question comes up, one of the areas that we do have control over and can focus on is outdoor watering, helping reduce outdoor consumption through smart management practices, which we'll talk about in the water conservation itself once it's published. But the point of this slide is to demonstrate that the residential water use follows the same trending patterns. And I know the numbers aren't here, but the single family homes make up eighty percent of the taps in town and use sixty percent of the water. And so it's a big area that we can impact if we look here. And then additionally, another big user of water are the schools for outdoor watering in the summer. And so they're using closer to about ten percent of the total water. And they make up approximately nine service connections in the whole whole community. So I guess the point being is that outdoor watering has a has a big impact on our peak summer usage. And it's an area that we actually do have some control and can make a difference over. In addition to the leak detection, which if we go back to the first slide, just to kind of break this down a little bit more. So the orange is outdoor, what is more or less considered outdoor watering in the summertime. It's a summertime usage. The blue line or the blue bars in the graph are the baseline usage that would be reflective of a wintertime, non irrigated usage. And then the green at the bottom represents the leaks or unaccounted water in the system. And so and you'll see that the the green is the same all year long is because leaks are there, whether it's summer or winter. And so they make up about twenty one percent of the the annual demand spread across the entire year. So that's that's effectively the baseline. I think it's the two most important takeaways from the data we have. There are a lot more nuanced items in there. Some aren't worth talking about much and we don't have that much control over. And then lastly, just showing, and it's not, again, not perfectly correlated, but you can see the orange bars represent annual million gallons used by the town. And then the blue line shows annual precipitation. And this is specifically for summer usage during that year because that's when it impacts consumption most. And so in general, with some exceptions, and leak and water loss does have some play in this. But in general, the blue, when the blue line is high, water usage is generally lower. When the blue line is low, water usage is up, showing that there's a strong tie to how precipitation affects outdoor watering, which I know I turn my irrigation system off when it's raining. So I might all to say that those are the biggest drivers in our water consumption in town between summer and winter. So at this point, we are trying to lay the groundwork to have a more spirited discussion about what we're actually going to do about this and what we can incorporate in the water conservation plan, what's realistic for the town to pursue. The Water Advisory Board has made some recommendations and put forth some ideas. They're currently currently reviewing how those might get implemented and what the impacts the town might be. And once that's reviewed, it will be presented to the board and town staff for comment, further game planning, that we can actually pull all that information out and plug it into the water conservation plan. Because right now, we're building the backbone of the water conservation plan, which is the baseline data, the goals and actions that the town can pursue, what the select alternatives are, an implementation plan to actually make that happen. And then ultimately, all of that gets packaged into a water conservation plan, which will be forthcoming. So at this point, um, any, any comments or questions? Um, I guess, um, oh, let, let me back up one more time. Uh, so for work session two, I guess, just, you know, have in your mind, and we can make the technical memos available ahead of time. So the folks can review and prepare, but we want to talk about our recommendations. Uh, understand why we made those recommendations and where those highest impact areas are. Discuss what this implementation plan looks like. And then also make sure that our goals align with the comprehensive plan. When we've been, uh, the folks, uh, leading the charge there, we've been in close contact with and been working on this together. So that's the current state of affairs and we'd be happy to field any questions or open it up to general discussion.
Trustees, questions?
I guess, Al, I, um, think that we are going to understand all of this, hopefully. Um, but, um, how much buy-in does the public have with it?
That's a great question. That's a great question. So we have a couple of opportunities, some we've not yet gotten to in terms of public engagement. We have monthly meetings of the Water Advisory Board, which is open to the public. Um, and that is an opportunity for engagement. Once that, because we're just working our way through the technical memorandums right now, uh, that's the level of engagement that we've been taking part in. But the actual drafting and publishing of the official water conservation plan requires a public review and comment period. And then we have a, some additional measures before we get to that, that we're trying to coordinate with the comp plan. Uh, the folks leading the comp plan to actually, uh, take a poll of the community or survey of the community. And understand what their baseline practices are around water conservation, what attitudes are, what receptiveness to different interventions might be, um, so on and so forth. And so while we've not had a big public engagement component to date, with the exception of the Water Advisory Board meetings. Uh, there will be more opportunity for public participation in this.
Okay.
I don't know if that's a, uh, answered your question or not.
No, it is a good, a good answer to it. Um, you know, I just feel like we have people who have, say, water rights and they, you know, water the heck out of their lawns. And then other people, you know, have to pay the higher, you know, town water charges. So they might not water as much, but somewhere in there, there's got to be some communication between the, the two groups, I think.
Um, perhaps I, I wonder if that compl- contemplates an area that might be somewhat outside of the town's control. Like we can control, uh, some things and suggest to our users who use water that we own and goes through our system and through our meters. Um, I honestly can't speak to how that impacts those who owned individual water rights and have the, um, have the legal authority to use them. Yep. It's again, an unsatisfactory answer, but if somebody else had a comment on that, that would be great. But that's, um, I don't, I think that, you know, through public outreach and communication, you can, you know, try to reduce their, um. Water usage or try to suggest, per- perhaps if they're, uh, interested in, but also those water rights have a lot of complicated legal stuff going on behind them. And there is some obligation to their part. So, um, but again, I can't speak to that, uh, completely, because that's not my area of expertise.
Yeah, and there's a difference between that and people who are using municipal water. And, uh, do you, cause right now are, you know, if we're in drought or low water time. You know, we recommend people to conserve water or use it at night times and things like that. Do you envision there a plan in the future where there's actual, like, uh, teeth in that? Where instead of just recommending people do it, do requiring it? Because there's definitely places in this country where it's far past that at the moment.
Certainly in that, yeah, that's a great question. And certainly, uh, one of the goals and actions that has been considered and, you know, depending on, you know, talent, interest and, you know. In adopting it by code or actually having some enforcement, uh, behind it. Um, that's certainly something that can be pursued. And so, um, you know, will it be the thing that gets elevated all the way to the top? I think is yet for, or has yet been decided. But that's the point of the next work session is to talk about what tools or what letters we have to pull, pull, uh, to do that. And the, um, actual watering restrictions with enforcement is one of them.
Yeah, as we maximize our water, um, usage, that's definitely going to be something that we'll have to look at. You know, as the climate is looking to change, that's something we'll have to look at as well. So it's high desert here and so people think they are required to have a lawn, even though it's not really what the nature has here. I think it's an interesting thing to look at to make sure people are using our water responsibly, so everyone could have it.
Yep, absolutely. And that, that is one item that the water conservation planning measures contemplate is how to transfer maybe non-native and non. Climate appropriate landscaping over to more, uh, locally appropriate landscaping. Yeah, no, great question.
Maybe, maybe just to kind of piggyback on the conversation on that, you know, there's, we spent a little bit of time, um, kind of talking about like, you know, maybe some layers to this. And like for, for, you know, um, you know, I think that there's some best practices that we can find, you know, um. Like in regards to outside use, like what is the, you know, how, how much water does a lawn actually? What's, what's the best practice for that? Is it an inch per square foot a week? And, and how can we provide that, um, those tools, what that information or the ability for maybe the people that don't have that, uh, ability to have that? So things like that, that, that's probably part of this too, that would come with it. I think it's pretty, pretty, pretty great presentation, Al. I think just wanted to commend you on it more than anything. But, but kind of back to that, I mean, there's, there's some things and yeah, we see, we see what's happening in the city already in Colorado. You know, the cities and the larger communities in Colorado, they're already restricting the amount of water that, you know, they're, they're allowing. Um, or restricting the time you can water, things like that too. We've had some pretty good success with our, um, voluntary water restriction kind of to our community. Where we get a lot, seems like we get a lot of buy-in when we do that, but it's not mandatory, but those things, you know, those things are popular discussions. And some of the other advisor boards are actually, um, have the, have enough, maybe some of the other advisor boards to actually give us some, some of that information that comes to like the outside use.
Yeah. Do we have anything in our code requiring when people put in lawns to do it in a responsible way? Cause I know we've talked about this in the past where, you know, if you just throw a seed on the ground, it's, you're gonna, you have to use a lot more water than if you're building in a responsible manner.
I think, uh, I don't think we have anything that, um, that really helps in that way right now. It's kind of one of our goals this year to achieve that.
That's something that you've looked at in building lawns or, you know, at the, uh, the single family residential level?
Yeah, um, it's certainly, it, I, I suppose it's not been looked at insofar as like adoption by code.
Right.
Uh, but it is, um, you know, contemplated in the best management practices. I can say that for larger developments, you know, beyond a single family home, there are limitations on what, um, how much, uh. How much turf grass can be used in other high water, uh, uh, high water plants? And then also, uh, they're, uh, more or less compelled to follow the, the B V planting guide, um, as well. Really strongly recommended, which I know that is being amended right now, um, and updated. So I would say that it's more in place for larger developments within the community, but there's not much in there in terms of single family homes and in, so.
Yeah, just helping educate people to know, like, you know, if you build this in the correct way, you're going to use a lot less water. And it's going to have a lot better absorption, things like that. Absolutely. Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, yeah, cause I mean, we need, I mean, we need some water, right? I mean, we need some water getting back into our, you know, into our climate, into a local climate, it can't just be through it all. Uh, but yeah, it's challenging.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I don't want people to attack me. But yeah, functioning landscapes, I mean, that's part of our perspective with the recent developments to looking at, you know, what we're doing between the sidewalk and the, and the curve in areas that, you know, maybe in the past, we were pretty, pretty quick to this. Bluegrass at it, we're not looking at that.
Right.
That way anymore.
Andrew?
Can I make a, a quick plug for something?
At least do.
Can you go back to, um, uh, come on back, keep going back? That slide right there. So I think some people will say, do, you know, do we want to conserve water and why? Well, do, but then the why goes about fifteen different directions, because some people say if we conserve water, we can have less gallons per S F E. We can have more S F Es and we can grow the size of, from field. You know, so that, so we should conserve water so we can grow. Other people say we need to conserve water because it's the right thing to do. We live in the high desert. Somebody else will say we need to conserve water because of, well, we don't know when we're going to run out and we have to have water for our current residents. So I think that asking an answer to that question just leads to an argument that will never be resolved because you won't get consensus. But I think on this slide right here, we as the trustees have a, I think it's very simple, fiscal or fiduciary responsibility for water conservation. Because that uses in July, that's the use patterns that prompted us to do the infiltration gallery project and the water plant project. So just round numbers, what are we spending on that project?
Uh, combined, I think it's somewhere between seven and eight.
Seven, eight million. And so if we flatten that curve to some degree, it is fiscally responsible because that postpones or avoids future capital projects. And so people can argue about lawns or whatnot, but I think it's simply very much a fiscal responsibility that conserving water is a fiscal priority.
So a point to look at it too, because it takes that aspect of conversation out of it.
It does, yeah, yeah. And so like, if that curve was flatter, you know, that project may not have had to been built so soon or at the certain capacity. So the project is gone to exhaust, the, the project we've built is to our, basically to treat our current water right. We need to, in future years, it'd be nice if that curve was quite a bit flatter, so we wouldn't incur those future capital costs. Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
There's the water park.
What's that?
There goes the water park.
I think you're, I think you're very correct, but in some of that curve is families producing their food for the winter, which to me really doesn't count as a lawn. They're actually producing something that their family needs.
I'm one of them. I did that totally. We, we, we have, we, we call our home a yard. That would, we have a yard. But yeah, and I think the idea is not, not, not to make that curve flat, but just to, just to, 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 to reduce it a little bit. I think ours previously used the term as that of outdoor use, it's called discretionary use. You know, there's some discretion over the use of that water. And so it's trying to encourage less, less discretionary use.
But I, I think what we're, you know, we're, we're not trying to promote a town that just has rock and cobble in the yards. We're trying to promote smart ideas for landscaping and outdoor watering that are water conserving in nature.
Yeah, and having a mix of both. I have friends right on the edge of town that have a little yard in front and then the rest of it is natural landscape. So things like that.
Working with the schools, I mean, ten percent of, out of nine, you said nine connections are.
I, I, I don't quote me on that, but it's, it's in the ten or under connections for the schools.
I mean, to me, that looks like the number one place to have conversations and figure out how we can make the total usage.
Yeah.
In the summer months, a lot smaller.
You know, and, you know, granted they need fields and things when school is in session, but you know, it's, we've all driven down Main Street and seen all the sprinklers going.
Yeah.
A lot of water.
Other questions for Al? Looking good.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
This is also a really great setup for our work session next meeting, so thank you for that.
Yes, yes.
A lot of questions.
Good, good, that was the intent.
Yeah.
Just get the baseline and then February twenty fifth will actually start talking about what, what we can do about it. What, what y'all think is appropriate, which will inform what ends up in the final conservation plan. So thank you, everybody. Appreciate y'all's time.
Thanks, Al. Great, okay. Now we are at the point of the cotton with easement. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do the next couple, there's a couple still residual planning things that were in process before we became.
So used to you.
Um, so the, these next few things should be pretty straightforward. Um, and I don't have slides or anything. So, uh, this one is, uh, one eleven Cottonwood Avenue, you know, the high rocky building, old high rocky or sold out tees or. Have you tents?
Have you tents?
Right, um, so the owner, this is preparing, maybe to sell, maybe not. But the, um, turns out that the building is two and a half feet in the town right away. So, um, their attorney and presented some idea based on, uh, the old Ford barber shop on North Court. Cause that also was out in the right of way. And there was this, uh, easement agreement created and our attorney looked at it, Catherine, Jeff maybe did as well, but. Um, anyway, here's this agreement for consideration to grant authority for this easement, for the building to be built in the right of way. Um, two and a half feet, there's that little red, red mark there. Um, it is, uh, you know, within it, of course, consistent with the municipal code. If there's six, seven or more damage of the building for whatever reason, or they want to tear the building down and build something else, then they have to come into conformity. So build a property, so, um, yeah, it's pretty straightforward. Attorney Parker's here, uh, if he wants to add anything or if you all have any questions. Um, and it would just be a motion related to the easement agreement, resolution number.
When was that built?
Nineteen seventy two for the assessor's database.
Wild West, yeah.
And Joel, you said this would apply to the building that's currently there only if they wanted new owner came in and wanted to take the building down, they would have to build with it.
Yeah, there's a sixty percent, you know, if they, if they, it changed it more than sixty percent. So if they did some interior remodeling or added a, I don't know, a second story in one part in the back or something, that could, could remain. It fits with our non, you know, our conformity, but it's written into the year.
Any questions for Joel?
In that way, it's just seventy two and it hasn't really bothered anybody. No, I mean, we did, uh, remember the building used to flood all the time, but we did all that work on the highway. It, uh, reroutes all that water into, I haven't heard of it as big of an issue, you know, it probably could still exist, but, um. Cause the water drains, right, which is two point one five right there down into the creek, but it is a lot better. But that was the kind of issue. I imagine if it was two feet back, it would have been less of an issue, but maybe.
Weird, huh?
What's that?
It's just weird.
Yeah. So there are many of these sorts of things around me to visit them.
For this one, I move we adopt resolution number ten, series twenty twenty five, approving an easement agreement for the encouragement on town right away. Jason to one eleven Cottonwood Avenue.
Let's take it.
So we got Rice and Row, um, Owen favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, the motion passes and resolution. Okay, the motion passes and resolution number ten is adopted.
Thank you.
Still you, Joel.
So the next, uh, item is on eighty-five in your packet. There are two items to consider, uh, related to Triview Metropolitan District. Um, Jeff Parker is here, of course, and Jim McGrady from Triview is also available. We need Jim for any reason, but, um, you all recall, we just went through Triview, um, talking about the Chicago Ranch, Triview paid for that. Uh, ready to grant Chicago Ranch ma- master project or master plan. We've, um, uh, they conveyed to us that two hundred ninety-four acres, um, which is now open space. So we've been working with them quite some time. Anyway, um, part of the deal with Triview is, as you know, they purchased the Ark Valley irrigation ditch that begins on Cottonwood Creek, runs through town property where the, um, storage tanks, other water storage tanks, cuts across BLM land through, um, down eventually to Chicago Ranch where they're building a, uh, recharge pond. Um, a lot of the water will continue to flow. They're pulling the water out, it's going through Waterport. That water will continue to flow down to a reservoir down south. Um, and some of it has to go onto the property for recharge. They fill the pond up, it essentially drains through the bottom of the pond and will get out the appropriate place at the appropriate time. So, um, but there's a need to measure that water. All the water goes into the creek, only some of it needs to go to the, the pond. The rest of it, the consumptive use will go back into Cottonwood Creek and down. So they've approached the town, uh, the ditch that, um, kind of west of our town property where that little star is, the, the ditch there, it's a pretty inconvenient place to build any kind, do any kind of work or maintenance, et cetera. It's pretty steep, it's hard to access. It's a lot easier to access a town property where it's nice and flat. Um, they can access it with a car. Um, and what they would like is an easement to build an augmentation station, which is the thing you use to measure how much water, you know, pretty low impact. I don't know if it's a partial bloom or what the device is, but it's a pretty low impact there. Um, so they're asking for that easement, uh, to be able to get on the town property, to build it, and then in perpetuity to access, of course, their ditch and, and their augmentation station. So, um, in exchange, um, they are gonna give the town essentially ten acre feet of storage in Pugllo Reservoir, um, that we can use uh, on an annual basis. It's not a, you know, we don't add up that storage from year to year, but ten, ten acre feet in a year that we could hopefully at some point use, uh, for that obligation to St. Charles Mesa. Um, we don't, that isn't enough, but it is a contribution toward that. Um, that's St. Charles Mesa, Mesa obligation. We still have to talk to St. Charles Mesa as well. There's some hoops to go through, but at least it would be some storage down there. Um, so there are two um, kind of agreements and, and I'm not sure if we really need a roll call. I said, let's go ahead and have a roll call anyway for these, but one is, the first one would be, uh, intergovernmental agreement with Triview for the, uh, um, alternative water supply storage, which is down there. The exhibit for that is the second agreement, which is the easement agreement. So we wanna make sure we do in order. We do the IDA first and the easement agreement, which will be recorded with Jake County Clerk, second. So, that is the, uh, yeah, that's basically the, the deal. Our town water attorney, um, town attorney, both of them, their town attorney, their water attorney, everyone's been working on this thing for, uh, uh, like, I don't know, a year, seems like twenty years, but hasn't been that long. But we, they've been working on iterations for quite some time. So every, all the legal people are happy with it. Staff's happy with it. We present it to you for consideration.
Yes.
Joel, was the ten acre feet, is it just the storage, right? Not the water associated with it?
Yeah, yeah.
That ditch there, that's the ditch that runs to their property.
Correct.
Yeah. We wouldn't see any use in that area.
No, it's really right where that star is. They just put a spur and measure the water that goes right down to the creek.
Right.
And the, the rest of the ditch continues.
And then town parcel is basically just our water towers and then our water plant gallery.
Yeah, it is in the county too. So, you know, wha- whatever regulations on like revegetation, when they disturb the, the ground, cuz they'll be doing some work, you know, they'll have to revegetate according to the county.
As far as county weighed in on this yet, but.
It had some conversations about it, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's, this was a little road.
Yeah, and it's not even gonna be an official road. I mean, it's an access to drive your car on it, you know, on one side of the ditch to access the augmentation station. And, um, yeah, I'm not even sure if you need a building permit to put in augmentation station.
Yeah, cuz it's not even really like a building.
And pretty small. Yeah.
Things, in some sense, this is their ditch and they have a right to improve and maintain their ditch. And so this doesn't fall too far out of the line. They have a right to improve and maintain their ditch.
That's correct.
So, the answer is yes or the answer is yes?
That's true.
Is there a motion?
I'll move resolution number eleven, series twenty twenty-five, uh, entitled a resolution approving an intergovernmental free, for alternative water supply storage with Triview Metropolitan District.
Second.
Okay, so we have Sturm and Rice. Um, let's do a roll call, please Paula.
Hi, yes.
Trusty Rice.
Yes.
Trusty Rudson Air.
Yes.
Trusty Row.
Yes.
Trusty Sturm.
Yes.
And Trusty Swisher.
Yes.
Great, the motion passes. Now, we'll go on to the, the next.
I move we adopt resolution twelve, series twenty twenty-five, approving a water infrastructure easement agreement with Triview Metropolitan District.
So we have Rice and Swisher. Is there further discussion? Um, let's do a roll call, please Paula.
Hi, yes.
Trusty Rice.
Yes.
Trusty Rudson Air.
Yes.
Trusty Row.
Yes.
Trusty Sturm.
Yes.
And Trusty Swisher.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, the motion passes. Joel. Um, okay, now we are going to talk about the, uh, advisory board and community liaison of relationships for the trustees. So, um, we have a couple, we have one opening, absolute opening, which is, um, the airport advisory board. And then we have the water advisory board. Some, some members might wanna change on doing that. Um, and go into some other liaison situation. Andrew, are you one of those?
Simply, I think Chris's contribution to the water advisory board over the last year and a half has been infinitely more valuable than mine. And I selfishly would like to see him continue with his participation in those discussions. And so I would vacate my liaison role for the water advisory board if Chris were interested in.
Chris, how do you feel about that?
Uh, yeah, I, I would, I would love to continue with the water advisory board. Although we miss Andrew, so.
I can come as a member of the public and then I can.
Drag him there every now and then.
I can go as a member of the public.
Yeah.
No, I've really enjoyed, I think, I, I, actually, I think I've been on that advisory board since it, since its inception when, uh, Sue Boyd was our administrator. Um, so that's a, it's a long run. Um, but, yeah, I'd certainly love to vacate the right away and, but Chris proceed there.
Okay, good. Um, and then where would you like to serve, Andrew?
Somewhere warm. Somewhere with beach.
The airport?
He's gotta pull the airports, the airport is vacant and, uh, I think that would be, uh, if nobody else want, if, if, if no other shuffling needs to happen, I'll do it. If everyone else is happy where they are, or do you wanna get some?
Is there anybody else who's clamoring to be on the airport board?
Unless you get access to plane, so.
Don't pretend like you don't want it. I saw you at the airshow.
Make him fight you for it.
I would never steal Andrew's joy.
So few things in life that bring joy.
Unless you really wanna go seven thirty in the morning to the record.
No, I, I would, I'd actually, I'd be, I'd be, I'm definitely interested in doing it, but I don't want to step in front of anybody else, anybody else if they have any interest.
I'd love to ask you.
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like that worked out. Okay. Now, is there anybody else who would like to shuffle off of the board that they're on? And consider something different? Okay, maybe we're done. Is there any further discussion on this?
Can I, I do have one. Question for Brian and Joel. The, um, our upper arc, so you, you go and attend those monthly meetings?
He hasn't been, but now he's gone.
Trusty, any, any interest or familiarity there to help?
Um, yeah, I would be interested. I don't think I could commit monthly, but I would periodically. Be very interested in going to those meetings.
There are two, two meetings back to back. They have like a half hour. I don't remember what even the.
They do an enterprise and then a regular meeting.
Yeah, enterprise and the regular meeting.
Pretty interesting for that hour.
You both be on there. I got a space on the. Push again. Yeah, put me down. Thank you.
Devin, are you okay with, uh, the cog?
Yeah, they're, I, they're kinda rough right now, but but they're, it's fun. I'm not sure what my timing will be in the future, so I might have to leave that, but we'll see if I get a fancy job or something. And they just fired their finance department.
That whole department?
Well, the person in charge.
Any other changes anybody wants to make? Okay, good, we're done with that. Um, okay, so we are, uh, trustee staff interaction. Um, I just wanna encourage everybody to, um, review that airport document drafts. They came in an email to us on February first. And, um, I think maybe by, by next meeting, we should try to review those. Or, you know, any comments that you have in, for the airport, because Andrew will come after us.
My understanding is they're gonna come, after the public comment period closes, they're gonna come to us and review the comments and final proposed version.
Uh, they'll come for a work session. Right now I've got them slated for March twenty-fifth. But right now it's kind of a public comment opportunity. If you've got really suggested, uh, changes associated with it, um, kinda wanna get all of those suggested changes in place before making Jeff read it all, uh, cuz we don't wanna pay him twice to read it. If you do read it and see some things that need change or you think should be changed, call them out now. Um, through their kinda comment period.
Okay. Um, so, Andrew, do you have anything else? Okay, Chris, it's nice to have you with us.
Thank you.
Any, um, comments you wanna make?
Nothing to add. I'm glad to be able to have those comments early in the meeting, so thanks for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome. So, me?
Um, I don't know how to say this, but last, last meeting kinda upset me. And I read my packet. It did not make me, uh, expert on seismatology and on geothermal. I really needed to hear what that guy had to say. We had someone in the audience that was very rude to him and disrupted the presentation. So I probably did not get everything that I should have out of that presentation. How bad do they have to get before I could say, could you please refrain from? And is there a certain point? He was so rude to that man when he went around with this computer, which I really didn't want him to go around with this computer, but I was not rude to him. Um, at a certain point, can you ask someone to leave the meeting if they're being disruptive?
Well, I can ask them to be quiet.
Thank you.
I can't, I can't really ask them to leave because it's a public meeting. And, I mean, I can ask them to take their conversation outside.
Okay.
Y'all agree with that?
I thought they were extremely rude to that man.
Y- yeah, I mean, it, it has to come to a, a, a pretty egregious level before you could actually have somebody removed. If, you know, there's lots of other tactics to use before you get to that point, so. Um, but you certainly have the ability to, um, request people in the audience to respect other people's time and typically that usually works, um, so. But if there's issues where you have somebody who's really disturbing a meeting, um, I'd be happy to discuss other options with you, which can also include just adjourning your meeting or taking a recess of your meeting versus actually taking somebody out.
Okay.
Thank you. I know that I said to him because he presented again tonight, I believe. And we did not discuss what he did, but we, we listened to his and he wasn't on the agenda. And we listened to him and we respected him while he spoke, but after that, he didn't respect other people when they spoke.
Yeah.
But I think he is out of line because that part, in that portion of the meeting, we are conducting our meeting in public with the gentleman who is on the agenda. The time for public comment is left. And so he's definitely out of line for speaking.
Yeah, and I think, any, any trustee is free to raise the issue. I know the mayor, you're in charge of running the meeting and decorum, but any trustee could certainly make a request to, uh, address an issue.
Be quieter.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can say, point of order.
Listen.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you can be like, point of order, this isn't public comment.
Yeah, and I need to use my gavel more sometimes. So, I apologize.
That was.
Because I think, I let the meeting get chaotic and I shouldn't have. You know, I mean, you could just see it was getting chaotic back there and, and it was, um, public comment went on, the statements that were made in public comment were too long. So, uh, we're gonna be timing them now.
Thank you. I just didn't know what my options were, but I knew that I didn't get what I was supposed to out of the meeting because that man could not do his presentation very well cuz of the audience.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel, you have any?
Oh, I was gonna follow up Devon, talking about the water and the mandated water restrictions and things. And we do have a couple, one, an emergency plan on the list to do and then a, uh, catastrophe plan too. So, we,
Those are all. Gets to that point and it'll be.
Yeah, and some of it ties in with like the, the well capacity, things like that too, when those are fully online, so. It's on the list.
Cool.
But. Thanks for bringing it up though.
Yeah.
I don't have any.
Sean?
Yeah, a couple things. I think, um, this week we're gonna start, uh, removing the pea gravel from the. Yeah, a couple of things. I think, um, this week we're gonna start, um, removing the pea gravel from the Columbine Park Playground area. We have the soft fall blowing in in a couple of weeks. We're kind of at their mercy a little bit on the schedule. I don't wanna have it close for too long for, for our community with kids, but I'm thinking probably maybe hopefully we can keep it, you know, down to about two weeks or so. Not too sure how long it's gonna take to get the, the pea gravel out. It's probably gonna go slower than I think. Um, so I just wanna make sure that the day that we have them scheduled to blow in the engineered wood mesh, wood mold style soft fall, they're gonna bring a truck in to pull it in, kind of similar to what they did with Curova Park. So kind of a one step process with that. Just wanna make sure we're done and I just wanna make sure I have enough time to do it. Of course, the weather's gonna, you know, hopefully good weather for me is it's snowing. So we'll take it either way it comes, but, uh, just trying to anticipate that. And, uh, yeah, so maybe the twenty four, twenty fifth will be done wrapping up that project is what we're hoping for. Kind of a soft, uh, startup next week at the water plant, um, a soft startup, yeah. Run process controls, bring water in, run it through the fire wells.
Testing, testing went well.
Yeah, just working on, um, you know, how everything's operating. We're still, we're still ways away from really getting into our system. Um, but, um, yeah, it's, it's exciting and terrifying, exciting. Yeah, it's good, have to have some real operators moving forward for their town. And, um, I met with, um, one of Ivy League's representatives last week to talk about um, some of the things that we should be looking at and how we can be looking at things and just some opportunities to talk about the water loss there. Um, having a recommendation that they come to a water advisory board meeting and talk to the water advisory board. I think that there's some some opportunities for actually some, at least some discussion topics that we can talk about, you know, like we're looking for five to seven gallons a minute in that entire system. And it's like, where is it? We know that, you know, it can be a pretty challenging thing to try to find that length. I mean, obviously we haven't found it in a hundred years, right? So since, you know, well, at least twenty years, ten, twenty years, some things like that. So anyways, I think it'd be good to, to talk to, bring that advisory board, you know, maybe come up with some ways to look at things or some ideas or some sounding board opportunities, so.
You said the softball field you're working on or?
Soft fall for the Columbine Park Playground. So that pea gravel that, that pea gravel that's in there, it's pretty much just like a veneer. It looks like pea gravel. It's just dirt. I mean, it's been on our top of the list.
There, yeah.
Yeah, it's been on our to do's for.
Hard to run out.
Yeah, yeah. So the, 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 what we're bringing in is kind of similar, it's exactly like the, the softball wood boats that we have at like the climbing boulders. It's an engineered wood chip that's designed for impacts and, you know.
So the softball field will still be able to be used?
Yeah, sorry, I'm talking about the softball field.
Soft fall.
Soft fall.
Yeah. Soft fall, wood chips.
Soft fall. I heard soft.
I'm sorry, oh, yeah.
That term we're all familiar with.
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen the kids fall off the rock itself many, many times. It's funny.
Those wood chips though, are they like splinter resistant to some degree?
That's what makes it engineered, if you will. It's a softwood out of Virginia.
Okay, I have like a trauma from elementary school, so. We won't be making that joke.
Good witches, we didn't have witches. Explain, explain things that.
Ryan, Sean, where are you? Do you have any more to say?
Yeah.
Ryan.
No, that is an important project, um, just from a public safety perspective that pea gravel after it's kind of run its course does not provide the cushion that's needed. Um, so, and it's gonna, it's gonna be a big project. It's a big undertaking, but an important one. So, um, that and then still Marika's, uh, thunder as far as shout out to Jamie for, uh, town employee uh, the year. Sean can't win it every year. For an employee out of planning to win it says a lot. Um, it's a hard department to win it out of.
Yeah. So Jamie is the, yeah, yeah, cool. What does she win?
Uh. You can buy her a frame for it, but.
Okay, yeah. Accolades.
Poison them up.
Great. Jeff, got anything for us?
You're muted.
A muted lawyer.
All right, no, no, I don't have anything for you. And I'm sorry for the wide angle lens. I'm using a different camera today, so, uh.
Makes it look like you have very long arms.
I know, I noticed that. It's kind of bothering me actually, so. I don't know what to do with them.
Okay, well, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Paula? The only thing I have, I just want to share with you, I will be out of the office from March fifth through about April sixteenth. With you guys, and I will be getting out the new knees.
Thought you were gonna fly. Also do a card in the night.
She'll be in good hands with Brian, Phillip and the rest of the team, plus you guys know what you're doing, so. I'll be thinking about.
I heard Devon, so. Uh, yeah, a couple of things. Thanks for giving time to the kiddos this evening. That's a good, great experience for them. I know they really enjoyed it. Brandon, Brandon and I did go meet with them uh, at the school and had a good time chatting with them. So fun to see all the kids engaged, um, with that. So, and then uh, thanks to our local media for, uh, giving some coverage to the federal, uh, funding grants and loan stuff. Um, I think it's important for our local community to know how that ties to potential impacts. And I think that between BV and the county and, and maybe Salata too, um, I think we've been very engaged with their representatives just to let them know how important that stuff is to our operations. So, yeah, but everything's working okay so far. Um, we'll see.
Did you make a request, um, recently?
Not yet. I'll be submitting one this week on one of those grants on the list. So fingers crossed.
Thanks for the communication on that. Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Great. Welcome, Marika. Nice to have you with us.
Thank you. Um, Brian definitely did steal my thunder. They were shouting out Jamie, but they're probably sick of it because I've just been telling anyone that will listen for the last couple of weeks. Um, but we are super proud of her. Outside of the update that I provided in the packet, we have had a submission for, um, Planning and zoning commission, which is really great. So hopefully we get that application reviewed with Planning and zoning commission soon for recommendations for the board. Um, we still have another vacant, um, position. I did reach out to, um, Becky who applied for the Board of Trustees a couple of weeks ago to see if she was interested and I will be meeting with her soon. But, um, should you have anyone that you think might be interested in Planning and zoning commission, please send them my way.
So that's what you're speaking with her about is Planning and zoning commission?
To see if she's interested. Yeah. She talked a lot about growth and, uh, yeah, the community wanting to preserve what was special with BV in her application. So I thought that that might be an appropriate fit for planning something.
Yeah, good. Very good. Maggie?
I've got nothing. I was gonna give a shout out to Jamie, but walk over here to go, Jamie. Yeah, I was really grateful to have a planning department.
Now, Mika.
Uh, I missed a lot of the budget conversation this year while I was on maternity leave, but I would actually like to talk about multimodal options and how those play into our budget and our long-term plans, especially given the number like plaques we're gonna be seeing in the next year or two. So I don't know where to like, where that fits in the agenda, if it's an annual conversation. Talking about like, if we're building sidewalks and new roads, you know, what can we do? Where's our clinic, where's our chance to influence that process?
Speaking of which, uh, you might as well read the airport documents to get them out of the way, because we will have another document coming, hopefully in the next month or two, that is intended to line out kind of that, um, to the point where, yeah, if somebody comes in wants to develop thirty acres or whatever it is, it's gonna be, this is the street. If you're gonna build streets, this is what it looks like. You're gonna put water mints in the ground. This is what it looks like. Um, planning process, um, stuff like that. And so what's called Development Handbook, now it's Development and Infrastructure Manual or something like that. It's been an ongoing process from a number of years and we've got it to a point internally that it's time to discuss kind of rollout. And so the next month or two is intended to have that high level discussion. Um, so, yeah, it's a good, good thing. And I think even on the development side of things, developers, I think, that I've discussed with want that input of just what do you want? Tell us what you want and it makes their life easier too. Um, so having that thought out conversation now, say, what is it? What, what does the street cross section look like that we want? Stuff like.
Thank you. Um, and I will unfortunately miss our next meeting on the twenty fifth, I believe. I'll be out of town.
Okay, unable to participate on Zoom?
Yeah, I think so. I'm gonna try to move things around, but I might be on plane. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah. Well, hopefully you can be witness. It'll be, it'll be good. Um, Devon?
I'm good.
Okay. All right.
Where you go?
Oh, wow. Oh, my, my only one was the airport document.
But we're here.
Okay.
A second.
And we have Rice and Row, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone oppose? Ooh, it's a germ.
Four and thirty. Good night, everybody.
Good night.